Really a major snafu on the interstate.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, maybe just west of county line or in the Decatur.
Everybody decided to tackle Mass Park.
Yeah, exactly.
Are we ready to get started?
I am, sir.
Okay, I'd like to open up the planning commission meeting for February the sixteenth, even though it's the twenty-third. We postponed till tonight from last week's weather event. And before we get started, I wanted to mention this is the twenty-fifth anniversary of Madison City Schools. And the planning commission is very much connected to everything that's happened with our school system. And I know one of our members will be here shortly, and she served ten years on the board. And she and I co-chaired the growth study and the planning staff supported that study greatly. So I think that there's an intrinsic connection between what we do here in the planning commission and the health of our school system. And I just wanted to give them a hat tip and say happy anniversary. For that, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Webber?
The first meeting.
Mr. Potter?
Here.
Mr. Ryder? Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Johnson? Mr. Caldwell?
Here.
Mr. Seaver?
Here.
Okay, five is a quorum by the hair of our chinny, chin, chin. And Dr. Johnson ought to be here shortly because she's cutting traffic at the moment. Anybody have any changes to the agenda?
Not sure.
Can we accept as written? Minutes need a motion?
Need to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Potter?
Hi.
Mr. Brown?
Hi.
Mr. Brooks?
I'm staying. I hope we make it. I can change that.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Minutes approved. This is part of the meeting where we accept public comments about anything that's not on the agenda or not in the public.
Hearing.
Yeah, the public hearing. So if you have anything, now's the time to step forward. If not, we'll go to the first item, which is the parking space requirements for many storage facilities and to amend section five fifteen point one. Johnny?
Okay. This is, like you said, a text amendment to amend five fifteen one. And the request is to establish a parking standard for many storage or self-storage facilities. Currently, it's grouped with warehousing, general warehousing and storage. Any kind of warehouse or storage is all in the same category. And to establish the standard of one parking space per eighty-nine thousand square feet plus an additional four parking spaces. That is a request from the applicant. What we're going to go through is just a little bit different than that original request. We, to a little background, we did a text amendment in two thousand twenty-two, March twenty-fourth, that changed the whole parking requirements, if you may remember that, this being one of them. Before this, warehouses was two spaces plus one space for three employees. It was amended and adopted by the council on May twenty-third. So that changed the whole parking category to what we have today is one space per fifteen hundred square feet of gross floor area. And in February, we received a site plan for a self-storage facility at the address that we have, at the address on Old Madison Park that you have a site plan for, that we will look at in a little bit. And the parking spaces did not match what was required. They had thirty, thirty-nine spaces at the time, and they would need it, needed eighty-five. So they made application to the zoning board. And we had a meeting in January, and before that, we had reviewed all the stuff that went before the zoning board, and I had reviewed it. Went into it really thinking, okay, this is a pretty big gap. You usually find a trend when you start looking through all the ordinances and you look through everything, but there really wasn't any out there. And the more and more, I looked at the zoning ordinance, the more and more of them had a separate, a whole separate ratio for many storage and a new warehouse. They didn't look at them as the same. And basically, my advice was, you have no hardship. I cannot support a variance here because the only way you can get a variant, or you're supposed to get a variance, is there is some anomaly, something wrong with that lot that you can't meet the regs. Doesn't matter that the regs might not be the regs that it's best for this. They are what they are. So that's where we came to this, that a text amendment is actually a better avenue to get some relief than going to the board of adjustment. So that's why we're here. And the analysis that we did for the many storage, once we decided to do that, the first thing we did is you just get on a line and you look at zoning ordinance after zoning ordinance and see what other cities do, and that was, it was not consistent. And I was telling you before the meeting, the next thing I did was get on Google Earth Pro, and they have a time lapse feature. So I took several of the self-storage facilities in and around Madison, and I would just blow it up, and I would hit that time lapse, and I could look at that same parking lot over a period of a decade. And so you just count the cars in the parking lot. And I think the most I counted in any was ten. And I looked at U-Lockett Storage on Celtic, Public Storage at that one at Chestnut, which is very similar to the one that is driving all this, and Life Storage on Madison Boulevard. A simple calculation for these facilities, assuming ten cars per facility would yield about one space per seventy-three hundred square feet. Staff also, we called the facilities. We asked if there was any peak times when they had more, maybe Christmas. People store their Christmas decorations, and they go and get them out. They said, yes, there was a little more, but it was sporadic. They may not have any in a parking lot, and then, you know, an hour later, it may be full. But it was, it never seemed to be too many. It was just, there was a little more there than usual. As a result, and after looking at this, and after looking at the trip generation that from the transportation of engineers that had a demand of one point one eight vehicles per hundred storage units, in their publication, staff recommends to end of this, one parking space per seventy-five hundred square feet of storage area. Now, the B-three section, the B-two section of the zoning code, we amended not too long ago as well to allow self-storage in B-two. And with the condition that five percent of the total gross area of the building has to be commercial, class A office. And so if there's that office, and in this case, when we get down to the site plan, there will be some office, that parking, the office parking will revert to the one per three hundred square feet that you would have in any facility where you would have office. So that's how this will work. Storage in B- Storage in B-three or the others where you can just have storage by itself, then you would just, and that's all you had, you would just calculate the storage. If you have office there, you would calculate them separate. So we recommend approval based upon the seven thousand five hundred square feet for the, for the storage, which is, is what you'll be doing here.
Okay, and I'm, I neglected to ask the applicant if you want to make some remarks. You're more than welcome to, you don't have to.
I don't have any remarks that need to be made, but if there are any questions, Andy Summers of Core Engineering just made a tree traffic. He's, he's the one who's been working with Mr. Blizzard on this. If anyone has any questions regarding the parking.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Any public comments? Being there's none, comments from the commission? Can I get a vote, please?
Move to approve.
This will be subject to the seventy-five hundred square foot requirement?
And this is a recommendation to council?
Okay, yeah, right, it's a recommendation to council. Vote, please.
Mr. Potter?
Hi.
Mr. Brown?
Hi.
Mr. Brooks?
Hi.
Mr. Caldwell?
Hi.
Mr. Seager? Hi.
Next one is subdivision Bella Woods Phase One Alpha, certified plat, two tracks on point six five acres. Is the applicant here?
Gentlemen, Donnie Spencer, Gilteena Development, seventy-five forty-five U.S. Highway seventy-two West. We've got before you tonight just a simple certified plat for the tract on the east side of our entrance at Bella Woods. And the reason for this was to restructure our entrance landscaping. Our original plat had our entrance monument on the west side of the entrance, but I have a tornado siren, a big green utility cabinet, and now a wooden telephone pole right where our sign monument was gonna go. So we opted to move it to the other side. And with the rightaways and utility easements that were there, we had to resub it to create this spot for the entrance monument to go. That's the purpose of this plat.
Thanks, sir. Stan?
I can't add a whole lot more to that. And I'm gonna go straight to the drawing. And you see, they're creating track two A, and it's really just a common area to be there that will be where the sign is. And so we recommend approval with that, with our contingencies and planning, which is a whole bunch of signatures and engineering. There is a vacation of easements needed. The best place to put the sign is gonna require the vacation, a little bit of the utility and drainage easement on that common area. Right now, we're pretty close to having approvals from everybody to send that on to council. So, so that, that's the only thing holding that, that, holding up the plat. But I think it's, we should have that before council pretty soon.
Okay. Other comments? Being there's none, staff or commission?
Move to approve, subject two.
Staff comment? Sorry to hear.
Vote, please.
Mr. Potter?
Hi.
Mr. Brown?
Hi.
Mr. Brooks?
Hi.
Mr. Caldwell?
Hi.
Mr. Seager?
Okay, next is, our next item is McCurry Crunk, is that how you pronounce it?
Yes.
Commercial certified plats for two commercial tracks on twenty point zero six acres. Applicant here, have any comments? Seeing none, staff?
As you can see from the picture, this is a really big lot. And it encompasses a lot of the property there. East of Nats, back in that area, there's a little shopping center in there, and there's, I believe, some daycare and some Madison utilities, infrastructure back there. But this, this is all, well, it's partly B-three and partly B-two. And the real purpose of this plat is to, if you can look up track two, is to subdivide that out of the larger property. And the purpose for doing that is the property to the west, which I believe is a little car lot, we should just buy that and incorporate it and use it as part of their, as part of the, part of their enterprise there, which is good. It's, the lot is, is overlaid with a floodway and a lot of different stuff. So it, it would be hard to develop on its own, but so with this and joining it with the, with the property or being in the same ownership as the property to the west, maybe they can utilize some of it. So we would recommend approval. Planning just has these four signatures. I'm gonna pull up the engineering comments and you might read those. If you have any questions on those, Michael's here and can take your, make your questions.
Hey. Any public comments? Commission?
This is a question, this doesn't eliminate access from seventy-two to the rest of that property? Does that road, something up the side provide access?
They would probably access the rest of that from that tributary way. They would go down Nats and hit that tributary way there.
Okay, I missed that part.
The tributary way ends, ends in a cul-de-sac.
Right.
And if you wanna get to track two, you're gonna have to hike a little bit.
Well, track two would have access to seventy-two.
Correct.
And, and, but the rest of it, once track two is eliminated from that, if you wanted to access the rest of the property, you'd have to go down to Nats and tributary.
Okay.
So looking at that, there's track two, this is a line between, it's deceiving, I mean, I'm looking at down here, I'm looking at, is all just track one down here?
Yeah. Everything there is track one. Everything in the yellow is, is one tract right now.
Well, track two's gonna come across right here, that's gonna be just track two.
Right.
Save the top off. Everything else is still connected.
All right.
Any other comments from the commission?
Move to approve, subject two, staff comments.
Give me a second.
Second.
Vote, please.
Mr. Potter?
Hi.
Mr. Brown?
Hi.
Mr. Brooks?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Mr. Caldwell?
Hi.
Mr. Seager?
Hi.
Okay, welcome to Dr. Johnson.
Glad to see you got some hair still.
We'll talk about it later.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Next item is the site plan for the national retail development of the site storage, mini storage facility on four point five two acres. The applicant need to say anymore?
I need to say something. Absolutely. This is a project that has been a long time in the works. This is a tract of land at the northeast corner of Madison Pike and Hughes Road, it's kind of behind the Madison Market DG. It's been an odd place to work with. Access has been an issue, some parking, as we discussed earlier tonight, has been an issue. I think we've about got it dialed in. We've been working with the staff here to be able to address any issues with regard to ingress egress easements, with regard to utilities and drainage, to make sure there are no issues that would be violative of any of the, the use around this property. We've worked with Mr. and Mrs. Spiegel, who own Samco, and are the lessees of the Dollar General to the south because there are some parking agreements there. So we've, we've done everything that we can with regard to the site plan to make sure that we are good neighbors and this is a good fit. In fact, Chris Eckert is here, the engineer for Caprene that has been working on this site plan, if anyone has any questions regarding the site plan itself. I've been working to vacate an old ingress egress easement in order to create a new one that fits this particular property and serves all of the property, as well as ingress and egress from the property. We believe that this is going to be a property that will add to the value as well as the aesthetic of the area. It's an empty field right now. And we are gonna be working with our neighbors in order to make sure that that continues in order to be able to properly develop that area. So I would be glad to answer any questions practically. If anyone has any questions with regard to the site plan itself, I'd defer to our engineer, Chris.
Thanks, sir. John?
This is the property. This is kind of a, a, a area that was, is left after the development of the commercial part of Madison Town Center that has the, the townhomes on, on one side that developed, and then they had the commercial frontage there. And there was this, this little area that's been there for a long time in the middle. And this is just north of the Dollar General store. And it's a facility that will be a hundred and twenty-six thousand seven hundred and six square feet with a hundred twenty thousand three hundred and seventy-one square feet of self-storage and six thousand three hundred thirty-three square feet of office. And it'll all be indoor. It'd be, I guess the closest one we have that I can think of is, again, the one on Chestnut and Walt Trianna, where everything is inside. They will actually be forty-five parking spaces instead of the thirty-eight that you have in your staff report. They have added several parking spaces to, to the total. And eight of those will be inside the facility for drop-off inside. We have, wanted to go ahead and put this up because Rush talked about the ingress egress easements. They were many through this property and that go and run just through the property to the north, through the property to the south, giving everybody access through there. Where the building was gonna be, was gonna set over the, part of the existing forty-foot ingress egress easement, that part is in yellow. So they had to vacate that. It's a private easement, it doesn't come from us, so you wouldn't have seen this vacation of easement at council. But we had to have proof that that was vacated and done away with, that the new one is, is put in to its proper place. And then it works its way back down to the, to, to the, where it is on the Dollar General lot. Everything's been signed by everybody. All the easements have been signed by those who are, who are conveying and those who are accepting. There's a lot of this, it's very similar to what we talked about in the text amendment, and I'm not gonna go back through that again. But one of the things that's, that has to be done on this one is the landscape buffer, since this is adjacent to the R-four, there's a twenty-foot landscape buffer. And as you can see right there, at a portion of, a portion of that property, the drive and on the east side there is only, I think, seventeen point three feet. And it's one of those situations where it's really impossible, I was looking for a good picture of the site plan, and this may be the best one. It's impossible because of the location of the, of the forty-foot ingress egress easement at the front, you can't go west. And fire has to have at least a twenty-six foot drive around the west side, so they can't narrow that any. So they're stuck with a seventeen point three in that location. They are, as you can see, they're gonna plant Nellie Stevens evergreens along the whole, the whole eastern boundary there. So we, this is only, you know, it's only like a, less than two feet that's different in the, uh, it's, it's less than three feet, the difference between the twenty and the seventeen point three feet. And it's not that much, it's not gonna really be a noticeable effect. We would only, we would only recommend it where, where they cannot meet it. In other words, if you get further north, where the drive is, that drive terminates, they should have to do the twenty foot there. So we would recommend, recommend approval of the waiver in those locations that are adjacent to that drive, and we recommend approval of the site plan. Our contingencies are, one and two, I found out right before the meeting, one is satisfied. Two, because you, if the council, I guess it stays, if the council approves the amendment to the zoning ordinance, two goes away. And then the landscape buffer there would be dependent upon what you do to not, with, with that. And that is the, is it, no, no other comments?
Don't sit down.
Commission?
Couple questions I have. Is it a one-story building? Two-story building? Okay.
Chris Eckert with Cap Ryan Engineering, I can take any questions if you like, if they're like that, I guess. If they're legal, I'm gonna.
Understood, okay. It was a two-story building, and then the property remaining to the north that they're not going into, it has access from other points, or is it?
I just brought that up, I apologize. One of the things fire did require, and it's not showing very well on this, is they have to have a second entrance because of the size of the building. If you know where the Burger King is on Hughes, there is a gap there. This ingress and egress easement runs all the way up through that gap, and they're going to build a, it's an emergency drive for now. It will not be for, you know, cars or public.
Okay. I was looking at the, I was looking at Google Maps anyway.
It's, it's a little bit north of this, but the property to the north, where it terminates into Hughes Road, where Burger King is, will be the second entrance, and it will be a surface that is approved by the fire department. Like I said, it'll probably be a gravel surface at this point for emergency vehicles, but, but it will be something that will hold any, I think it's seventy-five thousand square foot, seventy-five thousand pound fire truck.
But my question is, the property remaining to the north, there is still access to it?
Yes.
Okay, through some other means, not through this property? Is there an easement that, I mean, access easement that would grant the next guy to the north access, or it comes from somewhere else?
No, I don't believe there is access to this property anywhere else except through this property. But that's the way it's always been.
We, we have a ingress egress easement right here, I actually have the plan.
No, he's, he's saying others than that.
Oh, okay.
No, just any at all? The property to the north can still be accessed somehow? Okay. Okay, that's what I was after. And number three, this doesn't involve the cemetery? Okay, all right.
I have the most current set of plans here, if you want me to, I mean, I can show you what we're doing in terms of that.
Really, I was just curious how that piece of property, to make sure it wasn't landlocked, which I knew they had thought about, I was just wondering what the answer was, so, okay. And the cemetery, but I knew y'all, that was on there too, I was just curious. Okay. Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the commission?
And this is the perfect use for this piece of property, just saying, that's awesome.
I think it is, too.
Man, it's a little hole back in there.
I need a landscape buffer vote for the waiver.
Move to approve, twenty foot down seventeen point four three feet.
Is it point four three?
That's what it says. So, Johnny? I certainly do.
My second?
Second.
Vote, please. Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Brooks?
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Caldwell?
Hi.
Mr. Seager?
Yes, now I need a.
Thank you.
Vote on the site plan itself?
So moved, with contingencies?
Second.
Vote, please. Hi.
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 Okay.
Thank you very much.
Is there any new business? We have no new business, meeting is adjourned.